Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome. Very nice to see everybody here this morning. I will call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. and I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands, a part of the traditional territories of the many First Nations, Inuit and Métis in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people. I will now ask everyone to stand for the singing of the National Anthem. So before we move along the agenda this morning, I want to welcome the town of Drayton Valley's new C A O, Mr. Wally Ferris. This is his first regular council meeting, so thank you very much for taking the shot at joining Drayton Valley and we wish you the best of luck. We're excited to have you on board and we tried to keep the agenda a little bit light today for your first council meeting with us. It gives you an opportunity, maybe not to scare you away and to get to know us a little bit and what we're kind of doing in our community. So, welcome and thank you. And I will start with, are there any additions to the agenda from administration this morning?
On your worship.
Okay, I do have one addition for committee appointments. I'd like to add that to council items under 12.1. Maybe we'll do a 12.1A and we'll call that committee appointments. New committee appointments, maybe. Anything else? Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, thank you. Could we add Drayton Valley Community Foundation Marketing Campaign and the Free Press Travel Guide?
Is that more of budget discussion?
No, I would like to bring it up.
Would like to bring it up? Okay. Maybe we'll do that then as council-initiated items 12.1B. Do we want to put it there? So this is Drayton and Travel Guide? Great, perfect. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda with these two additions to the November 29, 2023 agenda? Deputy Mayor Clark, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the November 15, 2023 regular meeting of council minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to accept these? Counselor Evans, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning and no public hearings. For delegations, we do have community recognition this morning and with us, we have some very, very important firefighters in the room with us. On Sunday, November 26, 2023, members of the fire service attended the Fire Service Exemplary Awards presentation that was hosted by the province of Alberta to recognize the outstanding contributions of fire service personnel through the province. The town of Drayton Valley Council would like to recognize and honor Deputy Fire Chief Murray Galavan, Deputy Fire Chief Camille Lasek, Battalion Fire Chief Mike Gramlich for receiving their 20-year exemplary Fire Service Medals for the outstanding work that they do protecting our community and its citizens on a daily basis. It's important to recognize that working in this environment takes an incredible toll also on the families of these individuals. And it is therefore paramount that their families also be recognized for having the patience and understanding to allow these individuals to serve the community as firefighters and do the job that they do. Thank you very, very much from all of council and from the town of Drayton Valley for the amazing work that you do in protecting our community and individuals on a daily basis. I, Nancy Dodds, Mayor of Drayton Valley, on behalf of Town Council, recognize that these three individuals for their outstanding service in the community. So again, thank you very much. And if you want to come on down and we'll get a little picture and a little... All of our recognitions are special and that one is particularly special, seeing as all the extra work that they've been doing this last year in our community. So again, a big shout out, a big thank you and thank you to their families as well. So that is it for community recognition and we will now move into our delegations this morning. First up is RCMP Statistics from Staff Sergeant Troy Raditz and I believe Mr. Ryan Hoopner is here as well. So, welcome. Good morning.
Morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
So, as you can see from fancy graphic we have up there, fortunately, the overall crime continues to drop in Drayton Valley. It's, we've seen a real trend of it moving in the right direction. And as I've mentioned to council before, I'd like to take credit for it. I do think that the increased visibility of our membership, our current staffing levels are playing a role, but ultimately, a big part of it is just that crime is trending down through Western Alberta District. We're seeing that, seeing the rise of violent crimes to the south and a reduction in this area. So I do think the hard work of the members play a role, but I also don't want too much blame if it starts moving the other way. So I'll, I'll share the credit with, with general trends. Something to note through the period of October is that there was a total of six roadside suspensions. That brings the year-to-date to 11. So in October, we saw an increase in impaired driving incidents. Again, I'm not sure that this isn't related to an increase of actual occurrences as much as our members or our staffing levels are allowing our members to be more proactive. And I think they're out on the road more and if it's a complaint that's called in, they're in a better position to intercept it and deal with it as well as they're self-generating. They're seeing the offenses happen. So it's, it's nice to see that the members are finding these more. It's a little alarming to see that we're still seeing that much impaired driving within our community, but it is, it is nice to see the members are interacting. We did have four motor vehicle thefts through the month, which compared to previous years is good. It's still more than we want to see, but I think overall, the petty crime, the serious property crime and the persons crimes are all continuing to move in the right direction. And as far as an update, a few things that I'd brought up to council in the past, there's nothing new to report on the building. I'm still waiting for the decisions to be made at a divisional level so we can continue to discuss whether the town's interested in taking over the building, that type of thing. So that's still in limbo. The pre-charge approval that we talked about last month with the Crown Prosecutor, that's been going ahead for almost a month now and with a few growing pains, it's been going very well. And I think it's definitely moving in the right direction. As I mentioned last month, that we've switched to a watch system within the Drayton Valley detachment. That's the first time I'm aware of it's ever been run this way outside of a small stint through COVID. And it seems to be going really well. The members are benefiting from that direct supervision, working with their supervisors, and it's allowing them to get more consistent direction. I think do better work on files as well as get out of the office a little bit more. We continue to work towards adding our two new municipal employees, administrative support staff. This will go along with our watch system. And as I mentioned last month, through attrition, we'll probably convert a third, another, one of our existing M Es to a shift assistant. I think that's going to make probably the biggest difference in the availability of our members to do police stuff, lighten their administrative load and be more effective. We advertised with the loss of Michael Constable Ebacker. Our G I S unit has been running a member short all year and we ran an internal process and Constable Morgan Magnus was successful in winning the rotational G I S position. So as of January 1st, she will be moved into our G I S unit, our General Investigative Section, which will result in it being full, I believe, for about the first time in a year. Yeah, a year and a half. So that will be greatly increase their effectiveness and be a good support to the community and our, our general duty members. Highlighting calls through October, the members were called to assist EMS with a call of a stabbing. Members attended a residence in Drayton Valley and Brody Wolf was arrested and charged with aggravated assault. Despite serious injuries, the victim is expected to make a full recovery and the parties were known to each other. So this was not a case of stranger violence. And another file that I highlighted last month was a member-generated drug file that resulted in a significant seizure of fentanyl within the community. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of council that all our drug files are run by the federal Crown Prosecutor, not by our local prosecutors at the Hinton's Office. And that file was withdrawn at first appearance based on the discretion of the federal Crown. So your members are doing good work. They're trying to be proactive with the drugs. They recognize the seriousness of the opioid situation within the province. We are running into a problem with the federal Crown Prosecutor, having very little will to pursue street-level self-generated drug trafficking files that are brought to them by the membership. So... And that's all I have this month. Pending any questions?
Perfect. Thank you very much. I will open it up for questions this morning. Counselor Evans?
So that's somewhat concerning that they're not willing to pursue these. So what was the logic behind that? Just not big enough to be worthwhile for them? Or is there, did they, do you have a reason?
We received no feedback from the Crown Prosecutor. I can, Sergeant Hoopner's a little more experienced with this. I'll let him talk to the pattern we've seen out of the federal Crown Prosecutor.
Yeah, it's, so on this one, we didn't get any feedback on it. So that's the questions we're asking now, why? But I can tell you from previous files and discussions with them, there just isn't a willingness to pursue street level. We've had, we've done undercover operations here and we'd have had withdrawals on people who have sold drugs to undercover officers. That's a slam dunk. That's an easy one, right? You sold drugs on multiple occasions to undercover officer, but they'll, and some of the reasoning there is he's getting told from basically his federal line of supervision that they are not looking to prosecute street-level drug dealing. And so it's frustrating, especially when we're in an opioid crisis and fentanyl's we hear about all the time. It's a big issue in our province. So I don't know if that's a resourcing issue or what the justification behind that is, but we've seen this pattern for the last two, three years, probably.
I don't know if it would help at all, but would it be worthwhile for us to send a letter or let them know our disappointment in pursuing these? Again, I, you know, it may not help, but I, it's just worrisome with what we're dealing with. I mean, it'd be different if you were, you know, some guy was trying to sell you a little weed or something, but fentanyl's some pretty scary stuff to have in our community. You'd like to see him pursue that.
Yeah, I think it possibly could help. That's some of the discussions I've had with him, that this is a community priority. We're, we're doing this and taking, doing these projects because this is a priority that's been identified. Drug trafficking, drug enforcement's been identified. It's been on our, you know, annual performance plans for the last couple of years to plant down on that. And we would like the prosecution to be in line in what our community priorities are.
Yeah. And, and part of this is a problem, I think, with the methodology that the, that they've adopted for prosecuting different offenses within the province. We have a very good relationship with the Hinton Crown and honestly, I think they're one of the best in the province. They work very well with the membership and are very good at providing direction to the members and aligning their priorities with that of the police and the communities. Because the drug files are anything beyond, I think, simple possession are bumped up to the federal prosecutor, that seems to be where we fall out of sync, the, the police, the communities with the prosecutorial system. So I think pushing this up, the provincial to federal chain isn't wrong.
Maybe we can have a discussion about that and decide if, get the information, who we got to send it to, et cetera. Send a letter of concern, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I do have a discussion leader. I want to talk about perhaps sending another letter. So maybe this, we could add it to this and then we can maybe, the information that we have, we could work back and forth to make sure that we have everything, we've captured everything in the letter before we ship it off as well. Do it that way. Any other questions? Counselor Kamana?
Morning. Thank you. You just mentioned about the watch system and it's working well. Can you explain a little bit what that is and...
Yeah, sure. I can speak to it. So traditionally in Drayton Valley, we worked on the post system and that is the members rotate through on individual schedules. So you're not always working with your direct supervisor. You're not always working with the same membership. Now we've broken Drayton Valley into three watches and this specifically addresses our general duty members. The school resource officer, our G I S unit, they work separate schedules, but for our rank and file members, I think each watch consists of, if we have a full complement of four constables and corporal is full complement as long as everybody's working in that. And it allows those four constables to work the majority of their shifts with their corporal supervisor. So they're getting consistent direction. The corporal becomes aware of individual strengths and weaknesses, areas of improvement for each member and can provide that real-time direction and guidance. And it so far has seemed to be very effective and I think is freeing up the members to be out, out and about more.
It's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? You had mentioned that you're still working with the higher levels in regards to the space at the RCMP detachment. Have you had a discussion around portables or is that still part of the process?
Well, right now, what I'm finding is because the future of the, the building is a bit in limbo, nobody wants to commit. We've had the discussion. I honestly believe that probably the addition of portables is going to be the easiest short-term solution while we work to that, you know, that five, 10-year solution to give us some longevity. I think the, the issue right now is who's going to retain ownership of that building and then we can pursue some updates or expansions at that point. It, I can tell you at the district level, it being well-supported to turn that building over to the town, I anticipate that divisionally, it will probably move ahead, but until I get some kind of commitment, that's just a guess on my part.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Thompson and I had had a meeting with K Division about a month ago. So those were some of our concerns too. Maybe we'll follow up and see, we can push a little bit harder and see where we're at with those things because we did have those conversations for sure. And I thought they were supposed to get back to us on, when we talked about the detachment and, and there was, what was it called that was done on it?
The needs assessment?
Yeah, the assessment, yeah.
Where we were determined to be 50% under accommodated.
Yeah.
And just anecdotal, anecdotally, I can tell you that just this past week, we were having some work done in the single female washroom we have in the building and it was all day. And I can tell you that caused quite a...
Well, that's what I keep thinking of is the washroom, only having the one washroom. Like that's an urgency, right? So I think that needs to be...
And we are just now, I'm sorry, I kind of missed it in my update there, but we are expecting the addition of two experienced female members here sometime throughout the winter, which will be the highest complement of, of female members Drayton Valley's ever seen. And then plus with the addition of our administrative staff, which traditionally have mainly been female employees, like, yeah, we are, we are kind of at crisis point here, so.
Yeah. So maybe, Mr. Ferris, we could do a follow-up on that meeting from Ms. Thompson and I and then just maybe push a little bit harder, especially knowing that we do have two new female officers, that we need something done sooner than later. Cause yeah, that's, when we did the tour there, that's unacceptable, right? For sure. And I also want to just say thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that you and the officers and everyone does in the community. I know that I've attended a few meetings with you and I don't want you to think that when my anger or frustration is directed at you in any way, shape or form, that I really do appreciate the work that you do and I knew, know that you're working hard and what your role is. And I know that as police officers in this day and age, that you're working so much outside of that scope and a lot of those social issues like homelessness is falling on you. And that's our job as council to be advocating, to see changes. But I just need you to know that, thank you very much and that you are very appreciated. And the blame is not at you. It's just the frustration that I have with the system and the situations and, and everything that's happening, right? It's just, it's, it's, we've gone from a problem to, it seems like we've gone 10 steps back, right? So I think as a community and as an organization and individuals, we need to figure out how, how we can get to a better place. But I know that our role as, as elected officials is that advocacy. So we need to push harder for support for the officers, for social workers, for a lot of areas when it comes to that. So thank you for everything that you do in our community and keeping it safe as well.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And I, I have to be perfectly honest. I think the town is moving in a very, very good direction, very alive and this collaborative approach. And I know upcoming, we have the, the meeting for the community hub model. I've been doing some research into that and I think this town taking this progressive approach, I think you guys are very much moving in the right direction. So I expect to be the town to meet with a lot of success over the upcoming year. So it's very exciting to be involved.
Good. Wonderful. Well, if there's no other questions, thank you very much for spending the morning with us and sharing the stats and we'll see you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second up on our delegations this morning is 7.2. We have the University of Calgary Faculty of Nursing here this morning. We have Carolyn and Heather. Welcome. Good morning. Come on down.
Good morning, Mary Councilors.
Thank you. Introduce yourself to everybody and...
Absolutely. Thank you. My name is Heather Bensler. I'm the Assistant Dean Academic Partnerships. I'm coming to you from Treaty Seven territory from Calgary this morning with a couple of cups of coffee. Very happy to be here and I'll introduce my colleagues.
The roads are great for traveling, so.
Hi, and great to be here today. I'm Carolyn Trumper. I'm Executive Director in H S for Central Zone and involved in this collaboration in the Grow Your Own Nursing Programs. And I'll have Thora, who people may recognize, introduce herself as well.
Hi, I'm Thora Skeld and I'm the Site Lead Manager at Drayton Valley Hospital.
Oh, welcome. Nice to see and meet everybody. I know that I've met a couple of the ladies earlier, so thank you very much for coming this morning. So go ahead and...
Excellent. Thank you. So I don't think I need to tell you this problem, that rural hospitals in Alberta are closing due to shortages of qualified healthcare professionals and our current recruitment and retention strategies are not meeting the needs. I think you know that all too well here. We also know that rural nursing practice and rural practice in general is actually an expert generalist practice and not just something that necessarily an urban nursing program is prepared to give to students. And we also know that rural residents are, are most likely to return to their communities to practice and they're also less likely to participate in post-secondary education. I happen to be a city girl myself and my husband is a, a small-town guy from Pincher Creek, Alberta, came to the city, met a city girl and never returned. And so we really believe that one of the ways that we can help shift retention and recruitment of, of nurses is to grow your own nurses, nurses. Because students who want to access nursing education from rural communities often experience barriers, maybe as academic preparation, it could be financial barriers, cultural, social barriers. They don't want to be away from home because they love being in their communities. We also often picture nursing students being the 18-year-old female. And we know that that's not true, that there are mums and dads who would be fantastic nurses, but they can't leave their communities in order to access nursing education. And we would like to broaden the experiences so that we can have all people who want to access nursing education, who would be phenomenal nurses to be able to do so. And so, and I think Carolyn can definitely speak to this as well. The University of Calgary was approached by Wainwright Hospital from a very innovative manager who's for 10 years built community connections and wanted to build a Grow Your Own program. Why do we always have to have students go so far away? Why can't we have a program within a community? Especially when we've realized through the pandemic that we actually can educate very well online, but there are things that we need to do face-to-face. Rural, our rural Wainwright program or Grow Your Own program has cohorts of eight to nine students and we are just on our third cohort of students who have started the program. It's in partnership with Alberta Health Services and I can't tell you, overemphasize how important that has been, that we were invited into the community as University of Calgary to partner with the community, but also to partner with Alberta Health Services and their phenomenal leadership in helping us to structure a program that really meets the needs of students and is within the region of Wainwright. And so that's the vision that we're bringing here. It's a four-year degree, Bachelor of Nursing degree with an entry point for transfer students and also an entry point for... and also an entry point for someone who might have LPN training or paramedic training, but has the prerequisites to enter into the program partway through. And how we envision this program would be similar to what we have in Wainwright, because we've learned the lessons there. And you're welcome. We're coming with a lot more knowledge and experience. And 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 also, you know, what works and what doesn't work. Because our goal is to have a sustainable program that really meets the needs of the community. So our applicants there can must live within 120 kilometers. So they can't just kind of pretend and say, I'm from Edmonton or Red Deer. They actually have to be from within the region. And it is where they're online lectures by master's prepared nurses who have rural experience is who we're drawing from. And they take so online lectures, but in person lab and in person clinical. So clinical is within the health centers within the region. We have learned that we actually need to have students drive up to 150 kilometers to make sure that they are accessing the type of educational experiences that will prepare them to work in places like Drayton Valley. Because there isn't obstetrics care right now, and we know that you're really longing for that and need that in this community, then the students need to be able to travel somewhat in order to access that. But the goal is to prepare students to work within this region. So why Drayton Valley? Well, strong leadership. We've already been approached by your community. Again, we don't go to communities and say, we'd love to come here. We get invited. Because we have a commitment from the foundation and we hear from, you know, through you for residents that they're excited that this program will be coming. And we have a strong partnership with Alberta Health Services, and we cannot do this without them. Next, just as I said, those online and person, online lectures, in person lab and clinical means the experiences are really felt and the students are learning those important skills to be excellent registered nurses that have the skills to be able to work in a community like this. So we look to have a fall 2024 and fall 2025 intake with eight to nine participants or students per year. Why we can't go much bigger is because we don't want to overburden the healthcare system, which we already know is stressed, and we want it to really match well. And so that's what we found to be the perfect kind of balance. Our curriculum is under review right now, and I would love to tell you more about it, but it might have to wait another week before I can tell you much more about it. But know that it is a strong Bachelor of Nursing program that will prepare students for practice. We already have 21 applicants from this region. Yeah, so we're very, very happy about that. And that's with very little advertising, so they're hearing about it. But we do need to look at a pattern of intake. So right now, we're planning for the two years and then we pause. And that's so that we can see what's the, what's, you know, what is the uptake? If we only have eight students who are applying, then then we need to wait until we have more students. Or or maybe that's calling on the community to really raise up awareness of the program. Also, we need to make sure our clinical placements are not overstressed. Eight to nine students in a rural hospital is a lot. And so when you'd say that times two and times three, that's one lesson we've learned from Wainwright. So it's a pause for sustainability and then also acceptance from you as a community. Are we the program that you want to have here? So we're happy to build something in partnership with Alberta Health Services, but be responsive to the community. So a little bit about this. And maybe I can, do you want to speak to the, this is about our kind of co designing of a simulation program. This is really Carolyn's baby as well.
So it's been super exciting and we've learned a lot out of the Grow Your Own program. And I guess the other thing I'd like to speak to is that through this program, we've actually raised the value, perceived value of rural nursing across the province. We now have clinical nurse specialties or specialists in rural emergency, rural medicine and rural seniors care, which we didn't have before, which was a first, and Central Zone was able to move that forward. And the UFC has specific modules for rural nursing in their training, which is enormous. So I think we've got huge steps forward in the recognition of what rural, the delivery of healthcare needs to look like in rural and the training. That is a little bit different because it's so much driven by the community and the different communities that are in. So opportunity that comes out of the Grow Your Own program in Wainwright was, there was a great deal of equipment that was required to start off with the nursing program in Wainwright. And through discussion with the UFC, they are actually providing a capital investment of equipment for the for simulation programs in any of the communities that the Grow Your Own program will be in. So that's a huge investment of around $60,000 to $80,000 per community. We will have to start thinking about how we replace that over time. But to start with, to help train our nursing students, that's huge. But the opportunity that that brings is we're right now are working on a five year plan within Central Zone. Within Central Zone, I was just thinking there's some changes in healthcare, but within Central Zone, with the in the acute care, but also in the continuing care facilities. We have a five year strategy on how are we going to maintain the clinical competency of our current nurses, right? And our students? And how can we utilize the eSIM programs, the simulation program, to attract and retain other healthcare professionals? So simulation is not just the cardiac arrests and the trauma. It's also how do you deescalate high conflict situations? And I think there's opportunity with our fire and our RCMP actually to collaborate. So that collaboration with the community is huge. It's how do we work with our First Nations people? It's a pain care, wound care for our home care. So there's a huge opportunity to utilize the simulation to increase the skill set, to maintain skill sets. And maintaining competency in rural is huge, because we don't often see a lot of, and Thor can probably speak to this, but the numbers of people coming through the doors isn't that high to maintain your skill sets in in common situations all the time, right? Don't get a lot of traumas. You don't get a lot of heart attacks. But if we have simulation and we have teams training together, our physicians, our nurses, our allied health, the skill sets, the competencies and our ability to retain staff and attract staff to these communities is going to be enormous. So that five year plan is really exciting and definitely have to work with our communities and our foundations to help fund some of that equipment, but also to get the word out and use the fact that we're having a simulation center hub in Drayton Valley and in these other communities to advertise to help recruit staff to these to these areas. So we're really excited.
So what that means is what comes with the university stays. So by having this co design, if we're here for two cycles, but then as a community you're like, no, actually, we need an LPN program and you guys are a BN program, then then we actually leave the equipment here. So we're co designing it to be under Alberta Health Services, because they're not leaving. And we don't plan to leave, but we also know that 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 we might have a staggered intake. It might be that it isn't the right fit for us to be here more than two cycles. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think so on that, it's that the community itself isn't large enough to sustain more than two cycles at a time. So we have to work with communities around you, right? So other communities that are within driving distance to market the program. Not everyone wants to be a nurse. I know that's shocking to hear from everyone. But to be able to sustain those eight students over two years and then a two year break and then bring them back for two years, we actually have to work with communities around you to bring them into the program as well. So that's the other reason for those that break in intake is because we need to work, we need to market. And we also need to work with high schools to ensure that those standards are and they're teaching what they can need to be taught for the nursing program as well.
Yep. And so we're very excited about the opportunity to have a program like this here. The support for sustainment of this program is is really Alberta Health Services helping us with this. And that's guaranteed clinical instructors. So they help us to find those instructors, help us find those clinical practicum sites and also offer jobs for students while they're in the program and when they finish the program, so that we have a reason to retain them here. And then from Drayton Valley, we've spoken about the Clean Energy Building, about possibly having the classes there. We are co designing the the lab that we're looking to have at the health center. But I think there's an opportunity for us at the energies, Clean Energy Center, but also recruitment and scholarships and bursaries. Housing and childcare is a big deal for healthcare workers and students, making sure that those things are available to support students being able to do their classes. And that and then also promoting the program and sharing it with the communities around here so we can build a strong, sustainable program.
I just wanted to speak to the opportunities and what AHS is doing to try to maintain the students in the communities as well. So through the programs, as they gather hours, they can work with healthcare aides. And as they, they can also work as unis, so that would be undergraduate nursing students staying in the community. And in rural, there is a paid final practicum for rural nursing students. So that only happens in rural. There's only a certain amount of money, but. And we have allocated out those funds in Central Zone for Wainwright and the Drayton Valley nursing students in their final practicum, because then they can go directly from their final practicum into a position. So we are doing what we can from our side, but we do need assistance from the community that we are coming to.
Yeah, I'm open to questions if you have them. Well, thank you very much for that. Any questions from council? Councilor Gomana?
Thank you very much for that detailed presentation. You you are excited and as a community, we are excited as well. This is fantastic program for our community to have. Couple of things, the first is the, I guess, number of students. Like, you know, we have already 21 applications. That's fantastic. So I guess, you know, if you're doing it for two iterations, there will be some students that won't get the opportunity. There may be more, you know, when we started advertising as well. I think, you know, it may be prudent for us to look at beyond that and and plan for that, just just my thoughts. Also about the intake radius, there were some confusion about, you know, the intake radius and where the students coming from. Because I think when we go about 120, 130 kilometers from Drayton Valley, that's pretty much hitting Edmonton.
Right. And so we're we're not having them be, like, we're making sure that they're from rural, that they're not a city resident.
Right. I understand it's a kind of a fight light to to go to. But then, you know, would there be, I guess, some kind of a advantage or preference for closer to Drayton Valley?
Yeah, absolutely, there is. Yep, we want to have students from the from the communities. So we will, we don't just need to take marks. That's what we do in the city is we just look at marks. But when they come to a program like this, we have a written submission and that shows their connection to community. And so that becomes a factor in who we choose. Now, I'll say 21 applicants. We haven't reviewed those application applications. So it just means that they have the courses. It doesn't mean that they necessarily have the marks to get in. In the city, it's about a 92 to 96% average to get into nursing. We know that doesn't mean anything as far as how successful somebody is going to be in a nursing program. We can go much lower, but we don't, we need to make sure that quality is still high and students will be successful. It's a very rigorous program. So 21 doesn't necessarily mean that those are all those students would be qualified for the program. But, yeah, we will definitely take a writing, you know, a sample of their writing and their and that would include a commitment to their community. So and that would be valued very highly for us.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Deputy Mayor Clerk?
Thank you for the presentation. So I guess, question I have is, is there a target in terms of, I guess, retention from this program, like in the Drayton area or or surrounding area? Is there, I guess, what's your experience in Wainwright so far?
Well, our students haven't graduated yet, so we're not there yet. I think we will be soon. As a university, we can't impose any retention, you know, requirements on students. But we can, you know, encourage the towns to provide bursaries or grants that have a return of service. That could happen. We can't provide that, though. And a level of commitment, opportunities for engagement. And we know that social connection is what keeps people places. And also opportunity like childcare and housing that's affordable. So I think there's ways to encourage people to leave. Students who come to this program want to stay rural. If they wanted to go to the city, they'd go to the city. They want to stay. And so it's just finding ways for that to happen. But as a university, we we can't enforce any retention.
We do do a rigorous about, as well as UFC does their own evaluation. We have a evaluation process that we're leasing up in Wainwright that we're learning from the program as well and hearing from the students around, one, how do we make the program better? And two, having managers, et cetera, come and talk to them early on in around how to be successful in their registered nursing career as they move out of the program. And we are and will be doing workforce tracking over time to see how long the students stay in the area as well.
Perfect. Then the other question I have, I know, being in the community, I see, you know, there's there's retired nursing groups that go for coffee and those sorts of things. And they, you know, I see eight to 10 of them out at a time and there's, you know, three to 400 years experience there. So when you're looking at the clinical instructors and those sorts of things, I wonder if there's an opportunity there to maybe lean on those folks?
It's exactly who we would love to have teaching in this program. Yes. And also master's prepared nurses for teaching the online lectures. It gives opportunities for rural nurses who might not have as many opportunities to use that graduate education that they can teach online lectures with us as well. We also have service agreements with Alberta Health Services so that we're not drawing their staff to teach with us away from the program. We actually work in conjunction so that they can get time allotted to teach with us, but they continue to be Alberta Health Services employees. And that's really important, because we don't want to compete.
Really new.
Very new.
For us to be able to provide this program in our rural areas, we're actually take a look at some of our current staff and figure out, and this is where our local contacts and our local managers become so important, figure out how can we free some people up, what sort of casuals do we have? So that we have the ability to train and provide clinical instructors for the program. It's also a huge opportunity for to retain current staff and upskill them when they're teaching students. And they become really, in Wainwright, they're, the instructors are coming back. And it does, again, place a strain on our facilities, because we're already really short staff. But it's a little bit more short term gain or long term gain, because we will end up with 60 nurses in the trade, right? Over time. So it's just one recruitment and retention strategy, but it is a pretty exciting one. Any comments? That return for service, they stay as an AHS employee and then we bill back to the UFC. It's kind of how that works, but it's a bit of a juggle, right? To to figure out, but also provides opportunity for our current staff. And that also is a bit of a retention strategy as well.
Any other questions?
Well, this is very exciting. I know I had the opportunity to meet you ladies a couple of months ago. And I just want to say thank you very much. I know that the community is very excited. I've heard the buzz around the community, everybody talking about this, what an exciting adventure it is going to be for our community and expanding. We always hear that we have shortages when it comes to RNs and we look at the potential opportunities when we're talking to doctors. And just looking at, you know, the possibilities at our hospital, bringing back the obstetrics, you know, using our, having the ability to extend the hours on our CT scanner, looking at our operating rooms, you know, having surgeries here. So we've got four years to work on that, to work with the doctors and the government to kind of have those things come. So then it gives those RNs that a little bit more experience and hopefully retention of opportunities to work in the community. So thank you very much for this. We're excited. And we have some thoughts to consider when it comes to that retention and bursaries and things like that, as you said, as well. So very exciting. And yes, please keep us in the loop as this progresses forward and let us know what we can do. But thank you for traveling and coming here and.
You're welcome.
Very excited.
Oh, maybe just one quick question I'll ask. Councilor McGee just joined us here a little bit late. But any news on, I guess, nurse practitioners? How would that work like for RNs? How do they move from an RN to a practitioner?
So RN to nurse practitioner, we, they have to have two years of full time practice as a registered nurse and be recommended by their manager, like they have to be in good standing. And then they can go into an NP program, which would be usually about another two, maybe three years. But, yeah, no, this would increase the opportunity. But yeah, no, this would increase the opportunities because they need to be bachelor prepared in order to become nurse practitioners. So.
So maybe this is a conversation we have in two more years.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
For a program, yeah.
And becoming a site where MPs are welcomed and, and practice, I, yes, I think that's a wonderful opportunity.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much and travel safe and thank you for coming. Okay, what we'll do is maybe, I guess it's 10 to 10, it's early, welcome, welcome Tom, this morning for joining us. I'm going to continue on with, or jump to our decision items. How long are we anticipating 9.1? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not sure I understand the question. How are we anticipating?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I should call a break now or if I should maybe move into decision items 9.1. I know just sometimes everyone starts to look at me with all the amount of coffee they've drank that, readying a break. So that's why, that's where I'm going.
I see. I think, I think it was about a 10-minute presentation that we're, we're looking at max and then whatever would be for questions.
Okay, sure. Okay, we'll jump into decision item 9.1 then before we call a break then. I get it. I'm getting a nod that everyone's okay, maybe. So good morning, Ms. Stone. We're moving into decision item 9.1, which is our budget engagement presentation.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. This morning, I will be reviewing the budget survey that we ran from September 12th to October 6th this year. As council will remember, participants were asked to provide feedback on 14 funding priorities through a budget spend slider and also a public commenting forum. And we asked folks to also weigh the importance of each budget item. So I'll start with our participation figures.
Are you bringing it up, Nathan? Or Pam, sorry. Thank you. And can you see it above me here too?
I can. I also have it in front of me.
Okay, I was just thinking for everyone in the gallery to see. Is it here? No? Can you get it?
Okay. If we go to the participation page, Pam? There we go. All right, I'll start with the participation figures. So our budget survey ran for four weeks. During that time, we had 1,039 visitors to the platform, which was really great to see. From that, we had 221 participants actually actively do the survey. That translated to just over 21% participation rate. And according to Othello, who is the company that helped put this together, a rate of 15% is considered a reasonable baseline. So I was pleased to see that we did exceed that. So overall, the 221 participants voted to keep spending the same in 12 of the 14 categories. And on the chart, I believe it's on page 20 of your agenda package, yes, on the screen there. You can see that we ranked quite high and did well on the scoring that they have. So for approval, it's the percentage of people who gave a positive vote rather than a neutral or negative vote. And we scored quite high on that at 98%. Support is the average value of the votes, where the value of an opposing vote is zero and a supportive vote is 100. And we scored 91% on that. The consensus, how Othello scores that, it's a measure of the overall strength of the decision, considering both support, which obviously the higher number is the better. And then in conflict, you want a lower number there. We scored 95% there. And conflict, we scored quite low, which is what you want to see at 8%. So these figures demonstrate strong support for the distribution of the budget. On the next page, this is where we had participants rank the importance of each category. And it wasn't surprising to see that this year, participants ranked the fire services as, as the highest. But as you can see, there, there's not a lot of difference in, in the scoring. So between the lowest one and the highest one, there's only like 2.6% difference there. I'm not too sure what the, what that could mean. It could mean that folks had difficulty determining what is more important. And I, I think that we see that and council sees that when you are determining those, those priorities for budget is, is difficult to put one thing over the other. And I see that that may be translated to the participants as well. So from there, I'll get into our 14 funding areas. So I'll just go over how participants voted. And you'll see that there was a summary of the comments. These are not all of the comments. It's just sort of a highlight summary. And the information that was in the budget, the figures that were presented to the community, they're based on the budget figures from 2023. So for transportation, for example, as you can see, the majority of the participants voted to keep the budget the same. So that would mean the same as the 2023 budget. The comments, we received eight comments here. The comments expressed concerns from the expenditure on infrastructure and maintenance. Many believe that not enough had been accomplished, given the annual budget. There was a call for cost cutting and completing projects before they deteriorate further. People wanted higher quality materials for road maintenance and suggested deferring spending on development. Some found the budget reasonable, while others requested new facilities like an indoor playground. Additionally, there were concerns about the quality of paint used for line painting and the design of lanes at intersections. Next was snow removal. And I was surprised to see that the majority of, the vast majority of folks voted to keep the expenditures in this area the same. There were a total of 13 comments. Opinions varied on the quality and frequency of snow removal with suggestions for more efficient snow removal methods and enforcement of the rules. Concerns were raised about the costs and need for snow removal, as well as whether the costs were distributed fairly among residents. And calls were made for a balance between snow removal and budget considerations. Next was enforcement. Again, vast majority voted to keep spending in this area the same. There were a total of 19 comments. Participants emphasized the need for stricter enforcement of bylaws, particularly regarding speeding and noise regulations. Community protection was highlighted with calls to address homelessness, drug-related issues and theft. Mixed opinions surrounded weekend bylaw enforcement with considerations of increased costs. Opinions on law enforcement priorities range from focusing on drug-related crimes to speeding. There were calls for increased funding for bylaw officers to enforce existing bylaws effectively. Next was fire services. Again, overwhelmingly voted to keep the budget the same. Total of 13 comments were made in this area. Concerns emerged about the impact of homelessness on costs and suggestions for additional training for firefighters, particularly in managing wildfires. Calls for a shared funding model for fire services with other municipalities were voiced. Some inquired about the budget management. Additionally, there were concerns about homelessness, about homeless individuals and their impact on fire safety. Moving on to policing, again, majority voted to keep expenditures in this area the same. A total of 16 comments were made on this subject with concerns expressed about the effectiveness of police in the community and calls to address drug-related issues and homelessness. Opinions on the need for more funding for public safety and law enforcement were diverse. A need for more significant consequences for repeat offenders was highlighted and calls were made to lobby for changes in the judicial system. Moving on to the omni-plex, again, participants voted to keep spending the same. We had nine comments in this area. The comments revolved around the desire for a 24-hour gym service, concerns about taxpayer funding, the need for revenue generation from the facility, criticism of competition complaints, the issues regarding employee productivity and wasting time. There was also a call for self-sufficiency through higher fees and energy efficiency. People emphasized that the facility should not operate at a deficit and suggested reevaluating free access for town employees and their families. The Ricochet Oil Corp Aquatic Center, again, voting to keep funding the same. We received a total of 13 comments. Opinions on the perks provided to town employees and their families varied, with some expressing satisfaction. Calls were made for reasonable entry fees for seniors and families. Suggestions for more swimming lesson spots and expanded hours were voiced. Concerns were raised about the sustainability and sense of self-sufficiency of the facility. Calls were made for fair fees for non-residents and more cost-effective management. Moving on to outdoor recreation and parks, again, strong opinion to keep funding the same. We received a total of 16 comments. Concerns were raised about neglected playgrounds and walking paths, with some expressing appreciation for support from parks in the winter. Suggestions included more inclusive facilities and groundkeeping in neighborhood parks. Calls were made for more activities during the winter months and addressing the homeless issue. Additionally, suggestions for improved public washroom facility and addressing the need of all community members were voiced. Planning and development, again, keeping funding the same. 13 comments were made. Opinions varied regarding the approval of specific businesses like cannabis and liquor stores, with calls for more diverse and sustainable business development. A need to attract new businesses and provide more amenities was emphasized. Criticism was directed towards the focus on specific types of businesses and a desire for more retail options. Suggestions were made for creative arts centers and improved efforts to attract new businesses. Economic development and sustainability. So as you can see, the, the highest number of votes went to keep the same. But I do want to note that the, the second highest and only by one vote, there was a, a strong opinion that the funding in this area could be reduced by 4%. But in the end, keep the same was the, was the majority here. There were a total of 14 comments. Diverse opinions arose regarding the tax-funded zero-fee tuition program with calls for changes and consideration of its effectiveness. Suggestions included attracting businesses, creating indoor playgrounds for all ages, and a call for increased funding. Alternatively, some expressed dissatisfaction with the return on investment and called for reduced funding. Community services. As you can see, the, the vote was to keep spending the same. Total of 14 comments were made. There were mixed opinions concerning tax funding for community service. Some called for alternative funding sources and expressed concern about long daycare waitlists. Opinions on funding for specific demographics and a desire for broader community programming was voiced. Additionally, there were diverse perspectives on county contributions to community services and some opposition to this idea. Opinions on funding for homeless support service varied with suggestions for a focus on broader community needs. Moving on to town council, as you can see, the participants voted for a decrease of 4% in this area. There were a total of 15 comments. Opinions varied on the compensation and expenses for town council members, with some expressing dissatisfaction. Calls were made for reduced compensation and expenses. Suggestions for more cost-effective council operations and a potential merger with the county were voiced. Concerns were raised about the allocation of funds for staff events and council compensation. For general administration, the most popular opinion was to keep expenditures the same in this area. There were 16 comments made. There were mixed opinions expressed on staff perks and costs, particularly related to staff parties. Suggestions for balancing staff perks and budget considerations more reasonably emerged. Concerns were raised about the allocation of funds for staff parties and alcohol at town events. Calls were made for more budget trimming in general administration to allocate funds elsewhere. Some citizens expressed concerns about staff salaries and a call for reduction in some cases. Lastly, the library. The popular opinion was to keep funding the same. The opinions on the need for a larger library space varied, with some expressing dissatisfaction. Concerns were raised about library independence and funding, with suggestions for more space for children, improved facilities and services. Calls were made for clean and maintained washroom facilities and a welcoming library space. A need was expressed for a safe and inclusive library for all community members. Some final comments that we received. Citizens expressed support for community events, but emphasized the importance of enhancing everyday spaces such as libraries and parks to retain residents. And some individuals welcomed a new bylaw ensuring project completion regardless of election outcomes. We did ask for some demographic information. So as you can see, the, we, we did have a varied participation across all age groups, with the highest participation coming from our 35 to 44 demographic. That does line up with the, the median age for Drayton Valley, which I believe is around 38. Overwhelming majority of the people that participated in this survey were homeowners with assessed property values between 300,000 and 499. And lastly, just the consultation experience. There was strong support for like the final decision and the group results, and that demonstrates support for the distribution of the budget. Again, that being the 2023 budget. And that also aligns with the approval support and consensus figures that we touched on earlier in the survey results. That brings me to the end of the presentation. Is there any questions from council?
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Stone? Council McGee?
Jennifer, the, how did you pick the participants? Did it, was it just at random and?
So the survey was just put out to the general community so anybody could participate.
Okay, and so we, there are some questions, participate. Here's what we received.
Did we provide the categories and the priorities or did the participants choose? Like when it came to fire, policing, snow, were they so like pre-selected and then they voted on those?
Yes, so these were all the funding areas that we currently have. I worked with finance to kind of break them down into, these are kind of our more popular ones. Like we broke out snow removal because it's a popular topic, but usually that's included under the transportation heading.
Was there an other, I guess, or an opportunity for them to comment on other things outside of the categories?
If they wanted to, they could have put that in like final comments or something like that, but we just kind of kept it to our 14. This is our areas of funding.
Okay, council. I'll go to Councilwoman.
Oh, sure. And thank you, Tom. Just wondering how did we put the, the survey out? Was it mainly online or online and did we do other means? Did we send it through our utility invoices or anything like that? Just, just because, you know, for a population of 7,600 and also probably adult population of at least 3,500 to 4,221 participants is not a whole lot. That's why I'm asking that question, so.
Thank you for the question. We put it on, online for sure. We did also put it in the newspaper with like a QR code because the survey is, was available online. So that's largely how we did it. With something like this, it was good to see that we had over 1,000 people actually come to the site. 221 in my experience in doing things like that is, is pretty typical for our, our community. It would have been great to see more. We always encourage more participation like that, but I would say that that's pretty typical for us.
Council McGee?
So if I wanted to understand the issue around council renumeration, so you would have put that budget out there in front of them to say, it's this much money, this is what they get paid, do you like it or not? And so they 4%, or the percentages said, take off 4%. That's interesting number that they came up with.
Right, so what we put forward to them for information was this was the total budget allotment that goes towards council. That includes like costs for you guys going somewhere, that would probably include your costs for going to conferences, like all of those costs associated. It's not just your, just your pay. And then in order for them to move that slider back and forth, we had to go with, like, do you want to reduce that by 1%? And then they could see how that would affect their personal bottom line. And I think it's probably just folks maybe not understanding exactly what it is that council does, what that provides to you. Maybe there's not enough education or awareness out there about what, what council's take home is from that. I wasn't surprised to, to see that. But I do think it's maybe just a lack of awareness of, of the value that council, council brings to the community and the work that you're, you're doing.
Mr. Ferris, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, if I could, I think a couple of things. Number one, it's important to understand that this, this survey is not a statistically valid survey. It's a survey that we put out that, you know, we, we allowed people from the county to participate in that as well. So it's not just town residents supplying, supplying information. And it, it, it's good. There's some, there's some good feedback in there in all of our areas. But, you know, if we wanted to do a statistically valid survey and make sure that, you know, we're screening who is responding to this, that would be a much larger undertaking, would require a budget to do so. But I want to thank Jen for, for work on this and presenting it. It's, there's some, there's some good information in there for us.
And how will we use that information? Uh, because I I'm not finding it useful on a personal basis. I don't see why we would have spent any time on this whatsoever, but so I need to understand that.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor McGee, did the how you'd use that? Well, we're about to enter five days of budget discussions. I felt that uh there's information in there that you need to see. When you look at the overall survey and the number of respondents and and how they responded, it tells us that we're doing a good job maintaining services that um uh at the same levels in in most of the categories. Uh, you know, in in these surveys, oftentimes you'll you'll see rants uh from from residents and and where they pick on people. You have to kind of filter some of that stuff out and look at the overall results of it. And when I look at it, when I when I went through it last night, I looked at it and I said, hmm, not bad. Uh, you know, most people want you to maintain services. As we enter these budget discussions over the next four or five days, that's valid information for you to consider.
And I do believe that uh we did approve the going forward with the budget budget engagement portal uh in our last year's budget, just to give the community a feel of what it's like to sit in administration and council seat of when it comes to making those hard decisions with our taxes, right? So uh I think that maybe going forward, if we do have any tweaks or concerns, then, you know, maybe we have a conversation is that this is a useful tool, but maybe we'd like to see this or that changed or, you know, um, something different for for the next time, right? Um, but if there is no further or further questions on on this, I am needing a motion to accept this as information. Councillor Gomana? Are you making the motion?
I made the motion that we accept this as information.
Oh. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Again, thank you very much for your presentation. We will take uh all of these factors into consideration as we move into our budget discussions and deliberations over the next coming days. And with that, there is a motion on the table, then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried and we will break for ten minutes and then we'll reconvene at about ten twenty-five. Okay, we will reconvene our meeting back at um, my clocks are all wrong here. Ten uh, ten twenty-six, I think is the right time. And we'll jump back into decision items. Uh, next up is Ms. Terry with our CTC landscaping concepts. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Um, so in twenty fifteen, administration worked with the consulting firm to provide the town of Drayton Valley with a design concept for the Clean Energy Technology Center. The conceptual design included both an architectural structure design and landscape design. Um, construction got underway in twenty fifteen and was uh commissioned in twenty sixteen. Upon review of the conceptual design, administration believes that the landscaping design was partially partially completed for the project at a cost of just over two hundred thousand. The original landscaping design cost for twenty fifteen was estimated at one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen. Administration assumes cost-reduction measures were taken to lessen the budgetary impact of the full project implementation. Proposal, administration is seeking council direction on landscaping work at the Clean Energy Technology Center in twenty twenty-four. Option number one is low-maintenance landscaping with consultant. So consult with a landscape architect to modify the current design the town purchased to provide a less expensive, low-maintenance, cost-effective landscape design that will provide the facility with an improved aesthetic appearance. Going with this option may involve a mid-year budget adjustment or a twenty-twenty-five budget request once design options are available for review. I was able to get a quote from uh uh an architect um to give us three concepts based off of our original design, to give us three additional concepts. It would cost roughly five thousand nine hundred. Option number two, low-maintenance landscaping in-house. Parks Department has prepared prepared low-maintenance landscape concept that provides fields of wildflowers and sunflower maze. The costs are as follows, sunflowers at a hundred and eighty dollars, gravel at sixty-six hundred and seventy-five dollars, wildflowers at nine thousand five hundred dollars. Um, topsoil, I was able to get a cost before coming, just when I did the report, it wasn't available. And the cost for soil, after Parks Manager and I went and looked at the facility, we realized there's really nothing there to bed the seeds in. So we would have needed soil and spreading. That came to a cost of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred for a total project cost of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five. Option three, original landscape plan, proceed with original landscape design concept. Administration estimates an annual cost increase of six percent over eight years totaling an estimated forty percent, forty-eight percent increase in costs. Should council choose this option, administration will obtain current quotations. Assuming a forty-eight percent increase, the potential cost increase could look like the following. Um, original cost minus the two hundred thousand, it was nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen. Um, original cost times the forty-eight percent increase um would be a total increase in cost of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight for a total cost of one million, four hundred and thirty-three, two hundred, forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-three. Administration is seeking council direction on what option to proceed with. Um, financial implication, financial implications are pending council decision. Option one at the fifty-nine hundred. Option two at a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five, or option option three at one point four million. Service level implications, service levels for hosting events at this facility would improve as the visual appearance of the exterior of the facility would would be improved. This aligns with our communication, community cleanup, beautification standards. Um, next steps, after council decision is made, administration will then complete the budget requests formed based off the decision approved. And our recommendation at this time is that council directs administrate administration to proceed with option one and work with a consultant to prepare a cost estimate on a landscape redesign at the CTC and that the design and cost estimate be presented to council as part of the twenty-twenty-four budget deliberation.
And thank you very much for that. I will now open it up for questions for Ms. Terry. Councillor Evans?
Hundred and thirty-nine thousand for topsoil. Do we not have some piles of topsoil there?
It's all clay.
It's all clay?
Very good clay, but it's it's majority is clay, yeah.
That's interesting. You would think that there would be a pile of topsoil in there with all that was stripped.
I do believe there was.
But it's been used. Okay, um, yeah, I didn't really get uh, I'm I'm looking at the rendering. Uh, I was surprised to see the uh sunflower maze that was kind of uh kicking around. Um, I don't know how serious we were, but
Yeah.
Um, because this has been discussed in the Sustainability Committee uh meetings. Okay, well, I guess, I guess that's, that's all I questioned. I just found the hundred and forty thousand is uh pretty steep for topsoil in there. So I just wanted to try and get a an idea of 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 how big an area were. Is that just for the area along the roadway access beside that where the where the you're proposing the sunflowers and the walkway?
It's it'd be on both sides because there'd be some additional topsoil that we'd need to get both the north and and south side of the road um addressed, and that that gives us about three inches of topsoil um only to to get our seeds to bed in.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Councillor McGee?
It's interesting because I I have a sunflower thing happening in the back of my yard and it's from birds eating the seeds and and they're growing up in the gravel. It's the most amazing thing and how they grip in there and grow that high is amazing. So I'm not sure if how much topsoil you actually need. If you just spread the seeds out, it 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 might do its job, but I'm not going to get involved in that technical question.
Yeah, I know the Parks Manager did talk to the supplier of the wildflowers. Um, and they 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 gave a recommendation on what type of soil to use.
Yeah.
Um, I did want to make kind of inform you that the soil is also with spreading, so it's not just the topsoil. It's actually having a company spread it out for us as well. So it's it's yeah.
And in that consideration, are we cleaning up the hills and the piles and stuff? That's all?
Oh, that's no, cleaning up the hills to the to the north.
Yeah.
No, it's more of a a measure to block them is kind of what we were going for with the sunflowers to the north.
Councillor Evans will probably wade into that question.
Councillor Evans, did you have? Mr. Ferris?
Madam Mayor, through you, just just a little clarification. So if you look at, if you look at the original design concept of the building, um, uh, the landscaping plan was a whole bunch of trees. Why, it was very expensive to block that view. Uh, that's what it was, so it wasn't knocking, it might have been knocking some things down or or moving some dirt around, but majority of that, a lot of that expense were were on those trees. So I think, um, you know, one, uh, you know, thank you, Shelley, for for finding those original landscape drawings and understanding what that original concept was. And then two, you know, the the options that, uh, you know, that that we're talking about was to to sort of do the same, right? You kind of want to block that view. So, you know, they they took that as a bit of criteria when they started to do uh do this work.
That's right. Yeah, they 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 wanted to do forty-five um Brandon elm trees, mature Brandon Brandon elm trees to block that view.
Yeah. Councillor Clark?
Um, just looking at option two question there was, um, do those costs don't include labor here? That's just materials?
It's just materials, yeah.
So, um, if we added in the labor there, do you have a?
For the for the sunflowers and yeah, I I don't have that off the like internal costs for our staff to do the the seeds. Um, for spreading the the soil, that was a contracted service. It was about seventy-three thousand, some change.
Councillor Evans?
I'm uh, I'm curious to know why we couldn't just get the topsoil delivered and then
And and we could look at that option as well.
I mean, our grader is perfectly capable of spreading that out pretty quick, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd also talked about Shelley um cleaning up that area along that uh that drainage ditch and stuff. Uh, as as we've all seen, those piles are right beside the ditch where they just kind of heaved it out there.
Yeah, and I did talk to Public Works about that as well, and and we could probably push those in-house um with our equipment to to smooth it out.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there's a day, day and a half or something in there just to kind of uh take all those big humps out of there and um just get that smoothed out a little bit so it doesn't look like such a uh war zone in there. Yeah, so if seventy thousand is just spreading that topsoil and I I'm assuming that's kind of a that's a stretch along the road there, correct? So and and on either side?
Yeah.
So we're probably looking at twenty meters or something on the north side and a little less on the south side?
Yeah.
Okay, well, again, I I I think I'd consider our own forces spreading it. I I know we're pretty busy, but uh, yeah, I I I think that'd save us some money anyway.
For sure.
But again, you're just, you're looking for some uh direction here on what to build into your budget, eh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So um, just so I have a better understanding of this, um, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Is this being brought forward so then um you'll have a report that'll come to our budget discussions?
Correct.
Okay, just so I have an understanding, because I know that we're, we've spoke about other areas in the community as well and maybe having that when we look at beautification, it was in our budget last year and then the carryover for this year. Uh, for me, I I like to see that theme being carried forward, not just to the CTC, but everywhere. When we're looking at our front entries, our um planters downtown, um, the center of the community across from our lovely lights, which thank you very much for that. And uh, and then also, um, for me, I, yeah, I just don't see spending a lot of money. And so you're looking for, I guess, direction to go forward to have a report for budget, right? It's not really a decision. Because I'm just wondering, like, wouldn't these decisions, so like, if you went with, if you went with option one, then of course that's preparing to come and then there would be no allocation of dollars or decision, but if you went with number two or three, there would be a financial implication and without having further budget discussions, I don't know if we're there, so that's why I'm just kind of trying to wrap my head around it.
If I if I could, Madam Mayor, so uh, option one, there is a, there is a financial implication. So option one is to hire a landscape architect and look at low-maintenance cost landscaping options. So uh, if we were to receive that approval to today, if that's council's recommendation or that that is staff recommendation.
That was the fifty-nine, fifty-nine hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we receive that, then then uh we would, we would start to process, hire a landscape consultant, architect to come up with those three options. And those options could either um come back in in, you know, in sometime in in twenty twenty-four as a budget adjustment or they can be considered in twenty twenty-five as a budget pressure. The other options um are out there. I mean, we, you know, respectfully to councillor Evans, I I can appreciate that there always seems to be a way to do things less uh for less cost. Uh, however, you know, the preparation of the beds and the distribution of the topsoil uh does take a significant effort. And if staff were to undertake that, uh, it would mean that we're not doing something else, right? So it is an option we can do as council directs, but we have to understand that there's always going to be an impact to that. So that's why staff recommended option one. Let's have a look at at some concepts that can um for council's consideration that we know that when it's done right, it's gonna, it's gonna stay there for for quite what some time. If we go and push around some dirt and not spread stop soil and throw the seeds out, well, it might work, it might not, and then we're going to be back here having a conversation and you're going to be frustrated. So I'm a big believer of if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Uh, any other questions or are you ready to make a motion, councillor Gomana?
I have a comment and then I probably make a motion, but I don't know if that's aligned with what you mentioned, uh, Mr. Ferris. Um, for me, I think, you know, we are looking at the overall uh side of biomile on the other side as well as um landscaping um around CTC. So we've done most of landscaping around CTC. It's just the other side that kind of uh uh we are looking at in in this scenario. Um, which we don't know how what in the future holds for for that area. So, you know, putting more um funds and doing uh um consult, you know, hiring consultants to do landscaping and all that without knowing what we are gonna uh do with that area. In my mind, I don't know if that's the the right thing uh at this point. Um, that's why um I would probably recommend we had a conversation at the uh Sustainability Committee about uh this as well. Where, um, you know, until we have more information to make an informed decision on this, uh, we thought that it's better to have uh something with low-cost, low maintenance for now and have um have that permanent decision moved forward maybe another year or two once we know exactly how the area is going to be developed and um zoning and what's come going to come there and all of that. Um, so um, because of that, you know, um, I I think my preference is the the of the two, but I'll leave it at that. I'm not going to make a motion because I don't know everybody else, where everybody else is.
Mm-hmm. And just to keep in mind too, that at the Sustainability Committee, that the decisions aren't made there, that the recommendations are come to council, right? So
Absolutely. So this is a recommendation from the
So this is a recommendation, this report here today is a recommendation? Okay, from the Sustainability Committee?
Well.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
The request, uh, uh, thank you, Mayor Dodds. The request came from the Sustainability Committee that we look at this and 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 rise a report to council for discussion. And and that's what this is. Um, you know, we're we're looking for a decision in some firm direction on where we want to go. And and through you, um, Madam Mayor, to councillor Gomana, um, uh, very good points, uh, very accurate. Uh, you, I will note though that the the constraints of the landscaping um that we're doing are are still within the constraints of that building and that building footprint. So whatever happens in the property to the north, we're still going to have an area of responsibility to maintain as part of the uh CTC. Right, so it doesn't, if if there's a big development that happens to the north, Right? So it doesn't, if there's a big development that happens to the north, that area that we have, those constraints on the landscaping drawings will still be there, and we'll still be responsible to maintain that area.
So typically, because it's an internal committee and direction came from the committee, I'm just wondering if, because typically it would come as a update through a councillor, right? And then after that, we would decide whether we wanted to proceed with this. So that's maybe why I'm confused as why the report was done for an ask, I guess. Go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Again, we're just trying to give our administration some direction or council's feeling on how big or how small they want to go on this so they can start putting together some numbers. If I've made a mistake in the process, if you would have rather me bring this forward and then us make a decision and then go to council, I'm, I'm not sure if it changes where we're, where we're at here. Again, you know, we could have left this and then administration could have brought this at budget time, and then we would have been wrestling with, okay, which way are we going to go? So the idea behind this was just to get a feel for what council wanted to do. Did you want to follow the old plan? Very expensive, obviously. Do you want to get a professional involved and get a full design and then look at what those costs are, which I can say will most probably be pretty significant? Or do we want to go with a, with a lower cost alternative? Although it is with that topsoil more expensive than I first assumed, and also acknowledging the struggles with getting our, the time from our people. So yeah, in the end, all we're trying to do is hand these folks back something that they can run with and then come back at budget time with an actual number that they can include in their, in their budget. So I'll try and pay closer attention to that. All, we can change the process of what comes out of the Sustainability Committee, if you like, in the future. But yeah, I think all we're trying to do here today is give administration some direction on, on where they want to go, because we've all had different kind of ideas of what we want that to, to look like. Yes, in my mind, I would have liked to have seen us try the low maintenance landscaping for the year. You know, it won't necessarily be all that permanent, other than the walkway, which I think we'll probably introduce into whatever design we get. We're going to want some access along there from further to the east. So, yeah, maybe the process is a little flawed here. But again, it's just trying to get everybody to give their thoughts and some direction to administration for this. That's all.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I appreciate that. And maybe the terms of reference, we did fumble around with the terms of reference for this committee quite a bit, and I don't think it is very clear. Typically, on an internal committee, any decisions or I guess discussions at there would come as, to council as a discussion first, and then we would decide whether this is something that we would want to direct administration to do the report up. And it's just because when we as councillors sit at internal committees or even external, the other councillors don't know what's happening at those committees. So we don't, we're not sure of the conversation. So then when it comes, we're kind of going, well, where did it come from, right? So it was a, it came from the sustainability. So as part typically, and maybe that needs to change in the terms of references, that the internal committees come, recommendations come, I don't even know if they're called recommendations, come to council as an update when we give our committee updates, and then the direction is decided upon there. So it's not that it was your fault, it's just you didn't know, right? I don't think it's been very clear at that committee level. Like I said, we fumbled around with the terms of reference, not really sure what and how is happening there. And in the end, I appreciate, I know that we're trying to beautify the community, and we talk about the CTC, you know, when we go down there, that we'd like to highlight it, to be a little more attractive. We have events, conferences and weddings there, so. With that, if there's no other questions, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion?
One question before we make the motion. Option two is, it says ten thousand, but I think maybe I missed just a little piece of that, ten thousand, but then we got to get some topsoil, we got to add some stuff, we got to do that, right?
Yeah, so the topsoil and spreading cost was one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred. So that's how I got to the one forty-nine, four fifty.
That's where we got it, okay.
Deputy Mayor Clark, do you want to, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that why don't we just say, you know, bring these to budget, and we can talk about it at budget. We're not very far away from that. I don't think we need to make a decision in terms of here's how we're proceeding. It's going to be pretty wide out there pretty quick. So I'm a fan of just saying, bring it, bring it to budget, and we'll discuss then.
All three options.
We have the info.
So that would just be bringing the same report exactly as is to?
Yeah, I'd have to put it in our report request forms, but it's.
Counselor McGee, yes, do you have anything further?
Yeah.
Are we okay with that motion? I'll make that motion, see if you guys like it. I'll move that council directs administration to provide this information during budget deliberations. Period. I think that's what we need.
Thank you very much for that. There is a motion on the table. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor Evans?
I think, in my mind, it would have been nice to have, to find a consensus here today. Either we don't want the sunflowers and the simple stuff, or we want to look at a more interesting design from a, from a professional. To me, are the two, the two that we would consider. I don't think anybody wants to spend, what was that?
One point some million?
One point four million? Am I, am I wrong in assuming that nobody wants to spend one point four million landscaping that place? So that leaves us with the, with the two options left. And again, all I'm trying to get at is if we narrow this down to one option, we send administration back, they come back at budget time with all the information for that one option. So yeah, personally, you know, again, if there's a consensus that nobody wants to try the in-house stuff and the sunflowers down there, which seems to be sort of the, the consensus from what I'm generally getting, then there's only one, one option left there, and that's to look at getting a professional landscape artist to put together three options. So I guess I'm just asking, having said that, is there any interest in just making that the recommendation? That administration starts down that road. And then maybe what we might want to do is put a little money in the budget for that design, whatever it may be. Maybe we put away fifty thousand or something, just in acknowledgement of once all these design are done, we're going to have to pull the trigger on one. What those will cost, I don't know. Until we have the design, we, we won't know. But we'll have three options at that point in time if we go with, with option one. So just consideration for, for council.
I'm going to go to Mr. Ferris, and then I'll go to Counselor Ballas. Did you have a comment?
Well, thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I, I'd be concerned about Counselor Evans' comment about we bring it back to budget, which is start tomorrow, and we'd have all the information. We won't. But if you give us direction on, if council so wishes, I mean, you do have a motion on the floor. So we'll have to deal with that. But if, if you change your mind and want to go with options that staff have recommended about hiring a landscape architect, then again, that wouldn't be part of the twenty-twenty-four budget discussion. We would go ahead and do that work and hire the architect, come up with the options. It would come back preferably to committee and then rise to council for, for discussion and decision. And, and council will have options at that time to either do a budget adjustment for, for budget year twenty-twenty-four or have it, have it come as a budget pressure for the year of twenty-twenty-five. But if, if, if we're going to want to do the work this summer, then, you know, we would be, staff would be looking to go out through competitive process in, you know, February, March timeframe. So I would, I would agree with, with, with what you're talking about for consideration, Counselor Evans, with respect to option number, what was it, was option number one or two?
One.
One. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a similar concern. I, I don't believe in a Band-Aid solution, which is going to cost us roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then find out two, three years down the road, it's not going to be adequate, and then we have to go out and remove that and re-landscape at additional cost. I'm also in favor of option one of getting a consultant. If we're going to do something, let's do it right. And be happy with a permanent solution.
Thank you, Counselor Ballas. Counselor Gomana?
Yeah, so for me, I think there's, from the three options, you know, the fourth option is not to do anything. So from, from those four options, I think the, the option that, you know, do as is, is one point one million, which is, you know, a high number. I believe the first option would be something up there as well. I wouldn't think that somebody who would go and look at that and come up with a design that's going to cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars, probably that's close to the one million that we looked at the other time as well. So basically, for me, only, there's only two options. One, to do something or do nothing next year. That's, that's where I think our options will lie. I don't have a problem having a discussion during the budget time to see, you know, if we can allocate that one forty or we can allocate one point one or close to that. That's just my thoughts.
Counselor Sherriff?
So I am sort of in favor of option one, because we know what option two is going to cost us. And when it comes to option two, it's one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four fifty-five, but that's at three inches of topsoil. And I'm not sure we need that much, right? I mean, get a quota, one inch of topsoil, right? But if we go with option number one, so, you know, the designer will give us one or two or three, whatever, options with the amount of money it would cost, and then we can compare it to option two, and then we can decide.
Ms. Ramon? Thank you for that. Yeah, I would agree with the recommendation from administration to proceed with option one and get the, I think if we're going to do it, then like Counselor Ballas said, to do it right, to have professional and maybe look at that in the other areas of the community as well. There is a motion on the table to defer this to budget. I'll go to Deputy Mayor Clark first, and then I'll call the motion.
I'm sorry, option one, what was the cost on that again? Fifty-nine hundred?
Yeah, five thousand nine hundred for option number one. So there was a motion on the table. If the motion passes, it passes. If it is defeated, then we would proceed with someone making a motion on another one of the options. So if there's no further comment, question or debate, then I will ask, the motion was to just bring all of this to the budget discussions. So all in favor? All opposed? That is defeated, and I'm needing a councillor to make a second motion. Counselor McGee?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from administration and proceed ahead with option number one, low maintenance landscaping, using a consultant.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? None? Then I'll ask all in favor. All opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much for that. We sometimes take the long route, but we, we get there. I appreciate it. Thank you, Shelley. Moving on to nine point three, E Venture Northwest Alberta Letter of Support. Good morning. I was going to try to pronounce your name again, and I wrote it somewhere, and I can't remember where I wrote it. Nuryamri?
Oh, Nyambi Rai.
Okay. I apologize.
That's close enough, I guess.
Good morning, welcome. Thank you.
Morning and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to bring forward an agenda item for the E Venture Northwest Alberta Letter of Support, which was first brought forward November first, twenty-twenty-three. And in bringing this forward, I just wanted to add some clarification, because I do know when it first came, it seemed like we would be walking into contributing forty thousand dollars in seed funding for this e-venture initiative. And so the first point of clarification is just that there will be no money as asked from the municipality when it comes to the operation, maintenance and construction of the electric vehicle charging stations. Our contribution is only the land that these electric vehicle charging stations, electric vehicle charging stations will be on. And so for the forty thousand dollars that's referenced in the letter, that was actually a payment made back in twenty-twenty. And so the Talbot-Redden Valley was one of eight members that contributed five thousand dollars each for a total of forty thousand dollars. And so in the way that it's written, the letter does appear that it's a, it's a moment well, well, making for the future, but it's actually something that's been done in the past. And so that was just the point of clarification, just wanted to put forward. And putting that aside, so the motion on the table would be for council to authorize the mayor to sign the funding letter of request to the government of Alberta, and as well to authorize the mayor to sign the funding request to our MLA. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions to administration? Not as our member of council would like to make a motion? Counselor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council authorized the mayor to sign the funding request letter to the government of Alberta ministers on behalf of council in support of the Community Energy Association Northwest Alberta EV Charging Station Network Project as set out in attachment one.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Oh, is there another motion? Oh, okay, so there is a second motion? No? Was there two motions, Kundi?
Oh, sorry. So there are two letters. So the first one would be for council to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to the government of Alberta. And the second letter is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to the MLA.
Oh, okay. Okay, so there are two motions. Kay, I'll ask for a member of council to make a motion for the second, or? Thank you very much.
I'll move that council authorized the mayor to sign the funding request letter to the Member of Legislative Assembly of Alberta, for Redden Valley Devon, Andrew Boichenko, on behalf of council in support of the Community Energy Association Northwest Alberta EV Charging Station Network Project as set out in attachment two.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Ferris, we do have nine point four, which is to move into closed. Since we do have members of the community here, do we want to proceed with department and council reports and kind of go through and then come back after lunch and move into closed?
We can certainly do that, whatever council's wish there.
Okay. I think that's what we'll do, is we will start with our department reports. First up is Municipal Service Department Report, Ms. Shelley Terry. You didn't think I was going to call you already?
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. So this is my department report. So Public Works festive lights have all been installed, including a big display at Fiftieth Avenue and Fiftieth Street. We're also able to find some banners. It's not in the report, but that's, are for holiday seasons for, on Fiftieth. So we're going to be installing those right of way. On November twenty-first, a snow event occurred, which away. On November 21st, a snow event occurred, which prompted our sanders to begin sanding the roadways. Hydrovac work is still ongoing. Public Works is assisting utilities to replace or assisted utilities to replace a broken shut-off valve. Weather is still warm enough to continue work on pothole filling. Staff are able to fill the excavation areas in the pavement caused by the exploratory work performed for the distribution upgrade project. Staff are working on safety training, which includes fall arrest and aerial platform training. Parks graffiti removal throughout town is ongoing. We've seen an increase in graffiti this summer and have been working hard on remediating those areas as soon as it's reported or staff notice. Two new staff members went to a course on how to properly build outdoor ice rinks. They're newer staff, so we wanted to make sure that they were all trained up so that we could get the best products possible this year. Utilities, two water main valves have been located for replacement and will be replaced as part of our capital budget valve replacement program starting the week of November 27th. Acute lethality sampling was sent away for our wastewater treatment system for the fourth quarter sample, and I'm happy to report that we passed. Lift station cleanout is happening November 27th, utilizing our internal staff and back truck. A sewer backup occurred on 55th Ave, which was reported by a customer. No damage to residential property was reported. Staff responded and resolved the issue within one hour. Staff are working on training, which also includes the fall arrest and aerial platform, which we merged with Public Works. Landfill and engineering stip grant application has been completed and sent to Alberta Transportation for consideration for funding on phase two of 50 Ave East improvements. I'm just finalizing the AMWIP grants, and we don't need a letter of support for the AMWIP grant as we have a council motion to proceed with getting that grant. Administration submitted the greenhouse gas report to the federal government on Monday, November 20th for landfill regulations. And now I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Doesn't look like there's any questions. Just a comment. Again, I want to say thank you to yourself and the team for the beautiful Fest of Lights. I know that it blew up our Facebook page with comments. And just when I've been out in the community, people have been just saying, great job. It's just really making them, you know, have that pride in their community and just bringing, you know, a little bit of joy to our community. So great job. It looks beautiful. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything else anybody else has, but thank you very much for your report this morning. Moving along, next up, 10.2, Community and Recreation Services Department Report. Mr. Hans Van Claveren, good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, and through the chair to the rest of council. So the information from our department is always a couple of categories. In ECDC, I just wanted to highlight that the Christmas Wish Tree campaign is ongoing. There's a lot of donations going on. We have families that are recipients of those trees, and it's clearly in need in the community that is clear through this process. And of course, we see that in a lot of things that we help out families. So it's much appreciated. And if everybody, anybody gets the chance to support this, then still very welcome to do so. Santa's Workshop is a big event that we pull off as well in FCSS. So Santa's coming to this December 10th at the MCC workshop that we do at that location. So there's lots of fun things going on. People can take photos with the children with the Santa, of course. We have the Santa shop, wrapping paper for the presents that can be achieved over there. So it's awesome. It's a good event, and everybody's welcome. In the Omniplex Live Barn is a system that means people can be a member on that system to be online and see video of our facility. So we are doing that, and we'll get the information out shortly when the equipment is installed. It's a system that's all over Alberta and a lot of people that wanted to see what's going on in our facility, especially, of course, grandparents, for instance, on a distance that cannot come to the facility itself, can see what's going on during games, practices inside our facility. So it's a great possibility to be engaged with what's going on. In Total Works, sorry, in the, yeah, the Total Works Fitness Center, we are going into an agreement as well. So to help out people get, let's say, into the facility that have a medical indication with our professionals in town that are under contract with us that can say, hey, this person needs to be in there for their health and their recovery, and they get a month free access to our facility. It's a great partnership with our local physicians that we can offer shortly. You see the new score clock? We've talked about that before. Of course, with the delivery as such an item, it's coming to our facility. And we said the whole time, we hope to install it during Christmas break. In our planning, of course, with the user groups, we see now when it's coming, that would interfere in already the planning that we have with our user groups. So not to disturb that, we are going to install it after the ice season. So far, we have not seen any disruptions in our current system. Luckily, of course, we cross our fingers for that. When we install the system, it gives us the opportunity to also check out the sound system and have an assessment professionally done to see what's potentially for the future. But hopefully, we can make improvements with the current sound system when it's restored again with this clock. An item that's not there, the heaters have been repaired, not the heaters itself, but the chimneys. So we've seen that that was an issue on the roof. So since they've been installed, the heaters were better. That means that we have, let's say, a little bit of work to do with the balance again on the warmth and the experience that people have in the stands versus the quality of the ice, of course. So we're working on that, but we know we can do some better with the heat on the bleachers. That's already by council mentioned before. Then we go basically to, let's say, Community Services. Community Services today, we are doing a test run with Drake's Handy Bus. So together with Drake's Bus, we talked with them, and they are doing today a run with seniors on a little loop and have some feedback and discussion with them to see if that's possible. It's a loop that's not on, let's say, request like the Handy Bus is doing, of course, for trips through medical appointments, for instance. But this would be a tour around town to get to shopping areas or areas that seniors want to go during one day or maybe even two days a week. So today, we're going to test that out and work with Drake's Handy Bus to see what that might look like. And furthermore, you see a lot of information again regarding our wait lists that we have. But I wanted to say some other thing in the Community Services. We had, of course, we work with events that are happening, the parade. We saw the parade last weekend. So it was great to see that, not only for us, because we do the permitting for that, but working with Public Works, Parks to make sure that that's a safe event thrown by the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, if there's any questions from council?
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Councillor Ballas?
Thank you. I had a call the other day about the fact, and I'm referring to the Aquatic Centre, that there were children in there, and the slide was closed. They just assumed that the slide was not operational. Then somebody went and asked a staff member, and they says, no, all you have to do is ask. I don't find that to be our proper procedure. Either the slide should be open or it should be closed for a reason, especially when there was a pile of kids there that wanted to utilize it. Nobody knows that they had to go ask. So I just think maybe that needs to be addressed.
Thank you for that. I will absolutely see what's behind this. So thank you for that, and we'll address that.
Any other questions? Just a couple of comments for myself. First off, I just want to say thank you for the heaters being turned on at the Thunder game over the weekend. I know that there were several comments of people that appreciated that, and they weren't freezing. So thank you very much for that. And also, great to see the Drake's Handy Bus on November 29th is going to be taking a bus full of seniors. That's fantastic. I know when we had the presentation from a couple there that are running, that they said that they were going to try to get this going. And so did we partner, the town partner with them, or who's kind of leading this?
So thank you for that. Yes, the town is partnering. At the moment, they are driving around and having that, let's say, lunch or coffee moment and have that discussion. So we are with the FCSS staff present and talk with the seniors and Drake's Bus. So we partnering in sorting out if this would be a viable thing to do.
That's fantastic. I was at Seasons a couple weeks ago chatting with them just a little bit about Christmas lights and things like that. Are you talking about maybe taking the seniors for a drive too to see the Christmas lights and the light up, or has that happened as well? Because I know that was another thing that was talked about that day when they were here, maybe taking them on a little tour to see all the lights and everything.
I will double check into it, but I know it's been done in the past, like an evening tour around the community, of course, because there's so many yards awfully decorated. So I'll look into it that that's happening again, or if it's not planned yet, that we could do something.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for that. And thank you very much for your report. Moving on to 10.3, Growth Services Department Report, Mr. Nuryambriya?
That was...
Close?
It was an improvement, I think.
Thank you. Just an improvement.
So for the Growth Services Department Report, in highlighting economic developments, just wanted to give an update that we are now at the stage of scheduling engagement sessions. And this is in regard to our labor market industry gap analysis and education needs assessment. So we have identified experts within the labor market, industry, and as well, education. We're having them just come and sit down, asking them a few questions to sort of help us identify certain areas to focus on. And in regards to the rural Nord Stream program, it remains very strong and active. We have approximately 145 employee applications received thus far, and we're just continuing to review them and move forward with them. And another thing to note is that, given all the work that we do with immigration and how that ties into bringing in newcomers to the community, we are also looking to establish a partnership with the Settlement Service Committee, seeing that there's a lot of synergy that can be broadened between the both of us. And so I think that will include the FCSS, the Drayton Valley, and District Community Learning Association, and as well, the Multicultural Society. And so just looking forward to working with them so that we can help support newcomers that do come to the community of Drayton Valley. And so when it comes to energy, this is actually something that was brought forward earlier, just about us looking to advocate more for the program to the government of Alberta. And just so that we can start this program, start the initiative as soon as possible and get the infrastructure built here in Drayton Valley. And so when it comes to education, it's some good news. The education coordinator will be starting next week, Monday. And so very excited to have her join us and just looking forward to see what we can do when it comes to education. And with another update, we just wanted to just provide a bit of information in that we have been having discussions with Everest, and so they are an education consultancy group that worked with us back in 2020 and 2019 to bring in Norquest. So they reached out to us again about a new partnership involving international students. And so there hasn't really been any more information shared apart from that. And there'll be a decision that they would have to make at some point towards the end of December. And so I'm just hoping conversations go well, they come to a favorable decision in that this is something we can bring forward for 2024. But just wanted to just provide a heads up that this is something that we are currently working on. And that is all for the report. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Clark?
Just one quick question on the RRS side of things. There are some companies, I guess, within Drayton that focus on RRS and bringing those folks in. Have you given any consideration as to including them on that Settlement Services Committee as well?
Through your worship to councillor Clark. No, that's a good question. So I do know for this Settlement Service Committee, it's not something that we have established ourselves. I think it mostly came through the Drayton Valley and District Community Learning Association, and how they were looking to partner with FCSS. And from what I understand, they're looking more towards having it as a support network for newcomers and settlers to Drayton Valley. And so it's definitely something we can bring up in the meeting to sort of see if there'll be any value in having businesses be part of those discussions, or at least having a representative for business communities to be a part of those discussions, for sure.
Councillor Ballas?
Thank you. In regards to international student programs, you're talking about an educational institution looking to partner with the town. What institutions do you have in mind?
Sorry, would you repeat? What institution what?
What educational institutions would you partner with to offer the services to international students?
So we haven't been told yet about what the institution is. So we don't know what the institution is right now. All we know is that they are looking at providing hospitality as a program to Drayton Valley. I do know last time they'd done business administration. And so this time around, they're looking at hospitality. And so they couldn't really provide us anything more about who they are. They only told us this just so that we can start having the conversations internally and sort of start preparing for favorable outcome.
Am I correct in stating that Norquest is still the steward?
Yes, Norquest is still the regional steward, but we still have the ability to work outside of the regional steward. I think that Everest has just maybe like last time, they have a post-secondary institute in mind, but they're not letting us know, is what I'm understanding. They did this the last time as well.
But they would have to get the approval of Norquest?
No, it's just a courtesy that we've kind of worked out when we do bring an institute in, that it's just a courtesy that we give them the letter from the Minister of Advanced Education to say that we've got the blessing to work outside of the regional stewardship. We've worked with Everest in the past a little bit on this too.
Thank you.
Councillor Gomana?
Thank you. You haven't mentioned the organization that you're working with. I'm assuming if it is Everest, just giving my opinion. I don't have lots of confidence on delivering, they will deliver what they are promising. They have delivered in the first year, but then they haven't. But I'm just assuming. If it is Everest or not, I don't know. I think we need to look beyond that. Just putting all our money on one organization to deliver, I don't know if that's the right way to go move forward, because we may be disappointed again, if that's the case. The other thing is that, you know, it's great to hear about the success of RRS. I'm hearing that you mentioned about 145 successful applications, but I'm hearing a lot more applications going through and we are receiving, right, as applications. So that shows the, I guess, the importance of that program, and also the need that out there for a program like that. So we were fortunate as a community to get that. I guess the second extension to that program is the REES program, right? So I was wondering if you've made any headway on that.
No. Thank you for your question, councillor Gomana. So regarding your first point about looking for other partnerships outside of Everest, that's definitely, so when it comes to education, it definitely is a core service for us to look at various partners and sort of try to see which are the programs we can bring into education and to the CETC. So they are just one of the people that we've been approaching and having discussions with. And so that, yeah, so that's the note on that one. So regarding the rural and Nord Stream program, yes, it has been going really well. And so the way it works is that within each application, you can apply for various positions. And so within one application, we can get someone applying for five different positions. And so, yeah, so for the 145 figure really just speaks to the employers applying, but within that number, the positions would be vast. So that's for sure. And regarding the rural entrepreneur stream program, so this is something we're looking to bring, I believe, December 7th. We have an ad hoc meeting as part of the work plan. We thought we'd just provide feedback on that and how that would look capacity-wise and timing for us delivering the project.
Councillor McGee?
The news on international students is not good.
The news on international students is not good. Not here, but totally across Canada. Schools are being, are having trouble. They know that that's the bread and butter of some of the schools. They're putting restrictions on them. We've, we've had three schools here in Alberta that were run by a private person that have shut down. And so it's, it's kind of a mixed bag out there. So I think we, we really got to be cautious as well, right? So you're, you're seeing those news items, I guess, eh?
Yes, for sure. I do know a persistent program, problem that's been there is really when it comes to visas and a lot of the international students being able to come to Canada. And, and you know, even with the discussions that we do have with some of our education partners, they have identified some of these issues as well. And so with any ongoing discussions that we do have with Everest or any other partner, we'll definitely be, you know, having a discussion with them about these potential problems and risks and sort of trying to assess how to move forward with them.
And I think also to keep in mind, as Counselor McGee is referring to, it's, it seems to be in the news every day is the, when it comes to international students, is the housing shortage, is the strain that it's putting on our food banks right across the province. And I know that even we're feeling it here in Alberta and locally is that they're saying that in some areas that they've had to put a cap on no international students accessing the food bank. So I think as we're proceeding forward with this, just to keep in mind or to, you know, I guess, look for more information too of, of what's happening with housing, with food, with all of that. Because I would hate to be providing a service or working hard at something like this, bringing it forward, and then we don't have the capacity or we're going to run into those issues down the road, right? So if we're hearing about it everywhere across the country and, you know, in our province, we just need to be mindful, I think, and do a little bit of our own, our research as well.
Certainly, certainly.
Thank you for that. Well, thank you very much for your report and I'll move on.
I have a comment for that, just.
Oh, Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I think, yeah, there are, there are a little bit, you know, concerns about international students and immigrants in general. But you know, that has been there for, for a while. I think we need to focus on the positives rather than the negatives. The, the main focus is the economic impact that immigrants and the students bring to Canada and also to a community as well. So that's what we need to focus on. There's always be negatives out there. But without immigrants coming to Canada, you know, it has been one of the main economic drivers for us as a country and also for international students. Without that, most of our post-secondary institutions will struggle. Because there is one of a main economic drivers for those institutions is international students coming here. So I understand there's, there's a little bit of rumble and that has been there for a while. But in my opinion, I don't think we should need to waver from our original vision just because of there's a little bit of hurdle there. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We'll move along now into council reports, starting with Deputy Mayor Clark.
Attended the UCDC Child Care Board Meeting. We welcomed a new addition to that board. So that was good. I think we're, I think we're still looking for one more there. So I think that the recruitment process is ongoing there. Agenda setting. Attended that the other day. Homelessness Forum wasn't able to actually make that. And then lastly, the Joint Wild Rose School Division Meeting last night. You know, I guess we had some good conversations, but a lot of it did focus on places other than Drayton Valley and kind of detracted from some of the things maybe we could have talked to in depth. But otherwise, that's all I had.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor McGee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you can see, I'm here this morning and I'm into full recovery on my, on my knees. And I think I can manage the budget discussions as well. I had a great experience in Montreal. I'm happy to, to be back. I noticed the Meati flag ceremony hit the paper. I think that would have been pretty exciting. I would have liked to have been here for that. And I got an opportunity just to, to meet some of you at the start of the parade. And then I went to St. Anthony's and I, we, Father Carol was late, so we watched the whole parade from, from the church. I just thought it was outstanding. Well done. An oil field parade, if you can believe that. A big trucks, eh? Beautiful. Yeah. So good on you guys. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Counselor Evans.
Yeah, I attended the Meati flag raising before the last council meeting. It was a nice gathering. On the 21st chaired the Sustainability Committee Meeting. Was selected again to chair that committee, which I appreciate. Some of the, a couple of the things we discussed was tracking the recyclables that come into the, to the landfill there. Just I'd noticed I brought some oil in and wasn't asked where I, where I came from. So we're, we're, we're just trying to see how much we're getting from outside of town and if we need to address that. You know, I, I think we're happy to get that stuff out of people's yards and stuff as long as it's not costing us, us too much money on behalf of folks from outside the town. So once we get some data from that, we'll, I guess I'll bring it back to discuss with council and then we'll see if we want to make a report or decision on that. Also talked about the, the scrub brush and trees along the south entrance there under all those power poles. Shelley contacted Fortis. She just kind of updated me today. They're identifying their problem areas and the assumption is that they'll work with us there and remove those trees, or at least the vast majority of them. So we may, we may have to, once they get in there, assist a little bit. But it should be not much, a few thousand dollars if anything, to supply some equipment. But that won't be till 2025, Shelley? Okay. Bit of a wait anyway. Yeah, and I think that's about it for the Sustainability Committee. We're also looking at the recover proposition there. There's, there's still some questions about whether we actually will be allowed to set up an area in that north part, which is, is within the setback area. It's, there's some confusion there, but I think the bottom line is if we, if we do accept that, it'll be there forever. And we'll always be dealing with the runoff from that, which is there's a cost to, to get rid of that. So it would be, anyway, a long, very long-term commitment on the part of the town to take care of that. Even though it's listed that I went to the local homelessness forum, I did get tied up in St. Albert that night. And I submitted this before then. I did not make it. But attended with most of the rest of council, the Joint WRS meeting last night. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Ballas.
Thank you. Also on the 15th of November, attended the Meati flag raising ceremony. Then on the 22nd, I participated in a team meeting with other rural areas in regards to airports. And it was a very interesting discussion and a lot of good things came out of it. And I think one thing that was mentioned was recognizing your airport as a regional airport rather than just a local community airport. There was also discussions about what is the role of the provincial government in rural airports? What is the economic value to the local areas such as, you know, the availability to promote tourism, medevacs, oil and gas, forest research and rescue, recreation? What are your economic development opportunities such as flight schools, aircraft mechanics, charter flights? Is there investment opportunities and people putting up hangers that could be rented out? Especially if you're looking at doing a, I'll say, aircraft mechanics. There are mechanics that are available and looking for areas. All they need is a spot to work. And then we talked about what airport needs, like in our particular airport, such as the pavement overlay, upgrade fuel system, the car lock system, jet fuel, potential for courtesy vehicle, and then the terminal building. But that's not a great prior, priority right now. Then on the 25th, the Christmas parade, 27th homelessness forum and last night, the 28th, the joint meeting with Wild Rose.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sherif.
Not very much interesting things happened in last week. The Christmas parade, the local homelessness forum and the Wild Rose School Division last night. That was all.
Thank you for that. Counselor Kamana.
Thank you. There's most of that I've attended, been mentioned already, but I'll, I'll go through it quickly. A sustainability committee on the 21st, Health Foundation attended their meeting in the evening as well. They are doing a casino event. They actually did it last weekend to fundraise for the Health Foundation and for their projects. 22nd Community Connection Session organized by DV Community Learning. There were new immigrants from Ukraine, from Mexico, from India and from other parts of the world as well. It's great to see that as a community, we are getting more and more new immigrants to our community to, to work, to help build the community and to contribute to the community. I can assure you that when you, when you look at the food banks or any other, it is a very minute immigrant population that go into that compared to the rest of Canada. So, you know, it irks me when, when it says that, you know, the food banks are used by many immigrants. Just I'll leave it that there. Then Festival of Lights on 23rd unveiling, aviation meeting as mentioned. 25th Christmas Parade was a great parade with more than 50 odd floats out there and the community enjoyed the parade again. So thank you for Chamber of Commerce for organizing that parade. WRSDC meeting as, as everybody mentioned on 28th. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. For myself, I had the pleasure of joining the Meiti's Local 888 for the first Meiti's Flag raising ceremony here at the Civic Centre. It was nice. There were several people that came out for this. I know that, like I said, it was our first year of doing this and it's a, a new committee. So we'll be seeing them around in the, or in the community. I wish them the most of success and I look forward to continue working with them going forward. I had the privilege also of attending a second Mayor's and Reeves Meeting on Growing Our Rural Airports and the Economic Opportunities for Rural Communities. One of the things that of the committee is we're working with MLA Shane Getson in order to access grants and I guess create revenues for our local airports. Or as Bill's saying that, and we're referring them now to our regional airports. So lots of great conversation happening there. I headed into the, the legislature and enjoyed a session there. Got to hear what's happening at the provincial level as well as advocating for our community, talking about issues like healthcare, our education initiatives and our social issues that are around our community. So continuing to advocate there, things that are important to our residents and to council and administration. Then I also attended a midsize mayor's caucus meeting. That's something that's fairly new. It's for municipalities under 15,000. They're just having early conversations of getting this going in ways to initiate and be a voice within smaller rural communities. So I'll be talking about that in a few minutes when we talk about the new committee appointments. I had a meeting with our MLA Andrew Burchenko, again pushing forward some of our initiatives. We had quite a few joint letters going out between the town of Drayton Valley and Brazos County. So lots of advocacy there, lots for push for some of our issues and challenges in our community. It's great to see that we're working very hard with our partners Brazos County. I think that that relationship is jet, or has greatly improved. And it's just good that we're continuing to work so well together and we have a lot of things that we're advocating and working on. So we'll continue to do that. Yes, we had the Christmas Light Parade, the unveiling of our Christmas lights. And then also I had the privilege of doing the puck drop at the Thunder Game, which was fantastic. Great to see individuals in the community come out and enjoy our AGHL team and cheer them on. And then also the Joint Wild Rose School Division Meeting and talks are in the way that hopefully maybe around Christmas or in the new year, you'll start to see students going into that new school and that end of town will change a little bit. And that is it for myself for reports. And can I get a member of council to accept both the department reports and council reports as information, please? Counselor McGee, thank you very much for that. And we'll move along to our council items. First up, 12.1A is new committee appointments. There is about, there's three or four committees that I just wanted to bring forward. One of them again was the Midsize Mayor's Caucus, like I said, that I had attended. One of the things that they had talked about is talking about your, talking about this to your councils and perhaps getting a motion to approve that the mayor continued to participate in the initiatives to explore the creation of a midsize towns mayor's caucus and then this to be added to our standing committees list. So any comments or questions in regards to that? So am I wanting to request a motion, Wally? Is that kind of how now for the, the new committees kind of going for? I have all that too. So there'll be four.
That's correct, Your Worship. I think you just did with the, the motion that you raised.
Am I able to make a motion though myself?
Yes, you are. You would, you would, you would need a seconder.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I would like to make a motion that council, okay.
Consider a standing committee, Midsize Mayor's Caucus.
And then to be added to the committee, committee list. It was my writing. Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much for that, Counselor McGee. Any comment, question, debate on that motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Second up is we received a letter from, I just had to bring it up, my computer shut down, from the, I think it's the Pembina Aerodrome Association requesting a counselor to attend those meetings. And let me just pull it up here, to invite town council members to come to the airport meetings. They're held monthly, every second Thursday each month at 7:00 PM. It would be a great way for town council to see how they run the airport as well as receive the input and things like that. I know Counselor Ballas has showed a passion and has been attending a few of these in the past there. So that would be my recommendation, but it's up for anybody else if somebody else wants to sit on that or is interested in the airport as well. And what are our thoughts if we want to join, if this is something that we want to add to our standing committee list as well? How is everyone feeling? I know we talked about it in our economic development strategic planning area a little bit as well. Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, thank you. Whoever's going to sit on that committee would be sitting as a non-voting member, same as Drayton Valley Community Foundation.
Oh, okay. And so why is that? It's just their terms of references. Okay, Counselor Kamana?
Yeah, I, I've been to a couple of meetings of theirs and I think it's important to have that connection to the, the town, to the committee as well, because they've, you know, we are funding them and then they're maintaining the, the airport for, for us. And they are doing wonderful things there. And I agree with your recommendation, Madam Mayor, you know, Counselor Ballas has been interested and looking into the airport, I guess, how we can improve the airport himself. So I have no hesitation to make a motion that we, I guess we appoint a counselor for Drayton Valley Aerodrome Association and that council will be, Counselor Ballas.
Thank you very much for the motion. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Go ahead.
For all of our committees, do we not have a second? For all of our committees, do we not have a second?
Yeah, I was going to do this and then I'll, or do we want to do it all in one motion? I guess we could do it all in one motion.
That could be easier.
Okay. So there'd be, did you want to do, I was like a friendly amendment to the motion?
That we add a second on there, and I guess who does that want to be?
And that second person is? Who else would is interested in the airports would like to sit on that? Council Gomana as an alternative? Okay, so the motion there, there's a motion made by Councilor Gomana and then there was a friendly amendment to the motion to add a alternate, alternate member of council to be Councilor Gomana to that. Any comment, question, or debate on the, I guess you have to accept the friendly amended motion first. Go ahead, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just not to interrupt the motion, but I believe it's important to make sure that you also include that it's included in the committee list.
Okay.
And I will add that it's included in the list of committees.
Thank you very much for that. Pam, did you get all that? And then the amended? Okay, so there is an amended motion on the table. Council Gomana has accepted that friendly amendment, and then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. The third one is, as I had mentioned, I'd been attending the Mayors and Reeves Airport Committees with M L A Shane Getson, and I know that it's been great working with our Reeve Bart Guy on that, and I'd like to continue working with him to kind of push those initiatives and grant funding forward. So I guess I would be requesting that we add the, I guess there'd be a second committee for Mayors and Reeves and M L A for the airport to our standing committee list as well, and looking for, yes, asking council to sit on that as well, so. Yeah, I had talked about it with Mr. Ferris and we had talked about then if I'm going to be attending to those, that they should be added to the standing committee list, right? So that's kind of where that would be. Council McGee?
Take it that that's at a higher level, we'll have Council Ballas attend at the local level and then at the provincial level that you sit on that, on that committee. Is that the way you see it?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. And then both Bill and I, I think, can be kind of communicating on any things and then bringing both of those forward, right?
Yeah. And I'd make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we include the next level of the airport committee with Shane Getson and the Reeve and the mayor to sit on that committee and that it becomes part of the standing committee.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on that motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. And then I just had one last one. I know that we added the airshed and did we make it, add it to the committees or, okay, so we didn't? And we did pay an invoice. I think we might have paid an invoice. So I know that there's, we should probably add that one then to, to our standing committees. I think that we did decide or talk about that. Monica was interested in standing at that committee. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion for that? Or I could make the motion that Council Monica Sheriff sits on the, is it called airshed?
West Central.
West Central Airshed as a, and adding it as a standing committee to our list of committees.
I'll second that because I think I need to second that.
Okay, and thank you very much for that. Council Gomana will second that. Any comment, question, debate on that? Council McGee?
And I think we are going to be asked, if we haven't already had a letter from them, joining, it comes with a, an ask for funding, right?
And our bureau has, yeah, paid that, yeah.
So we're already in as a funder, right?
As a member.
All right.
And then do you know if they have an alternate? Like some, I know North Saskatchewan Water Shadow Lines did not have an alternate and there's a few that don't for some reason.
I'm not sure if there is an ask for an alternate, but the meetings are usually in Edson. So it is a little bit of a commitment to, I mean, the one that I went to, so far, I drove there and back, but the roads were good.
Can you Zoom, though? Is there an option to Zoom?
There wasn't that day, but I'm sure if I asked, it could be, probably. Yeah.
Mr. Ferris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important that all of our committees have an alternate. The alternates don't necessarily attend the meeting if the primary counselor is going, but, you know, for whatever reason, if council sheriffs can't attend, then the alternate should be there. So regardless of what the committee is, if it's, you know, town policy or direction that we have alternates for that, then it would be appropriate to have an alternate.
We do have some committees that are in their terms of reference or bylaws not to have an alternate. Yeah, they're, yeah, external. They're not to the town. Yeah.
Well, Mr. Ferris would be the, Senior's Foundation, really, because if you bring in somebody, because I can't make the meeting, they don't have value, they can't have value because there's no context to it, right? It runs its own program. I think the, do we have alternates on the library board? Anyway, there's just a few that, that one being one of them.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else that would like to sit as an alternate on the airshed? Okay, so then.
Yeah, and I'm pretty familiar with the West Central.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so there's a motion on the table for that, and I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. I think that was all in favor or waved at me. Okay, so there's those for new committees that have been added. Councilor Clerk?
We did have that written request from Brighter Futures as well.
Didn't we do that a while ago?
I don't think we made a decision on it, no.
Oh, okay. So we did have a request as well from Brighter Futures. Was that you? Okay. Do we want to have a discussion on that? Did we used to have that as a standing committee? For some reason, I think we did and then we got rid of it. Does anyone remember? Oh, okay, then we'll wait until it comes forward. Okay, perfect. Okay, so that's it for 12.1A and we'll move on to 12.1B. This is Drayton Valley and Travel Guide, Council Ballas. Did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, in regards to the repressed travel guide, the county has now approved their portion of the funding and I think Grandy is waiting for our decision now. And I think that comes to roughly $8,300 as our portion of it over three years, for the next three years. So are we prepared to entertain a motion to that effect?
Thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor Clerk?
Yeah, I think there was also that third party, their D V H T A, right? Did they, so they're waiting for us to make a decision as well?
Thank you for that. Council Gomana?
Yeah, I guess same goes to the, this is Drayton Valley as well. I believe that county approved theirs. We just got the email regarding that, so I'm not sure if that, we can make motions now and then bring it to budget as expenses, or we should wait till we have the budget discussions and, you know, have all of that allocated there.
I think for the county, this was part of their budget discussion. This wasn't in a council meeting, right? No, 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 it was in their budget. They started their budget already. It's not a council. Yeah, they passed. So Council Gomana's comment, just is wondering if we should defer this to conversation to the budget discussions rather than making a motion today. Counsel, or Counselor, Mr. Ferris, did you have a comment on that?
I do, Your Worship, and thank you for almost a promotion there. My advice would be wait for budget discussions to happen. There's, you know, there's some information around some of these initiatives that need to be discussed and today is not an appropriate forum for that. I think the appropriate forum is our budget deliberations.
Thank you for that. Council Ballas, did you have something to add? Are you okay with we talk about it in our budget discussion tomorrow and the next day?
So then when are you suggesting that we could make the motion?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Council Ballas. What I'm suggesting is that we, it is a budget item. It's an item that we have listed for discussion. There are a number of initiatives, including the one that you're talking about, that the county has already approved. And there's, from a process perspective, we don't want to short circuit our budget process, right? There's information that we need to talk about in a number of items that have already been approved by the, by the county that we haven't done yet.
So kind of, I guess, similar, Bill has, you know, we've had the museum come forward and ask for funds. We've had Opportunity Home come, so it would be, I think, what Mr. Ferris is saying, that if we made that decision today, these two decisions, then it wouldn't be fair to the other, I guess, reports coming forward that have been prepared around these decision items when it comes to budget.
That's correct, Your Worship. I think it's, you need to consider the budget as a whole. So if we start cutting off pieces and make decisions without considering the budget as a whole, then we may find ourselves in a tough decision. I will tell you that the next four or five days are going to be tough. We have some tough decisions to make and the time to make those decisions is during budget deliberations, not before.
No, I appreciate what you're saying. This was brought to us some time ago and I think in our discussions then, and if you can correct me, Oliver, you've mentioned that there was the possibility of funds in our existing budget that could be used? No?
For the maintenance part? There was.
For the free press? No? No, it's fine.
The maintenance portion, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So we'll talk about it in the next couple of days, along with everything else that will be brought forward to us. Yeah, and we'll do it with both of them then. Okay, and that's it for council items. We have no information items today. We will break for lunch at 11:55 and when we come back, we'll move into closed. Thank you very much.